I never bring my purse down.
Okay. It's, y'all ready?
Mm-hmm.
It's 9:30. The Brazos County Commissioners will meet in workshop session as follows. August 27th, 9:30, Commissioners' Courtroom, County Administration Building. First item on the agenda is the call to order and the second is the presentation and discussion of the FY '24-25 county budget. And I had asked Nina and Katie, most of this information that we'll see today was buried in that three and a half hour workshop we had last week. So I wanted to have y'all really where I think we need to be looking is at the proposed budget, where we're at, and then what we do to make it balance. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Since last Tuesday, there was a recommendation for a few changes, and one of those recommendations, and we'll go over the changes, was to add an additional .5% to the cost of living. So it went from 4.5% cost of living to 5%. And as you can see, the first, whoops, the first item, additional .5% cost of living for majority of county employees. This includes salary, wages, and benefits. It added additional $378,484 to the proposed budget. Along with this, we are waiting for a quote from collections for clear investigations. What this is, it allows that department to get better addresses, phone numbers, as well as emails for people who owes fees, fines, or restitution. And this is like a better way for us to collect our fees. And so it was additional $6,000 to the budget. One request was to move retiree health insurance from Commissioners' Court to a different department. And so we decreased the retiree health insurance Commissioners' Court by $4 million, and we increased the retiree health insurance and non-departmental by $4 million. That way you could see a true cost to Commissioners' Court. Another item, we had to transfer an additional $14,540 to the grant fund due to the additional .5% cost of living. And this was for juvenile and the TIDC grant, which was Public Defender. I do want to make a note up at the top where it says $5,522. This was an increase to revenues. And this is because we have an ILA with CSISD to support their school resource officers. And in that contract, whatever expenditures we have in the budget, we match into revenues. And that $5,522 was the cost of additional .5% cost of living. So that being said, it increased our bottom line to the general fund. And this is the same thing that was presented last Tuesday. This is without capital projects, an additional $22,475,505. Okay? I do want to show you what it looks like with the transfers to the capital projects. On this sheet, you're going to see negative $98,139,791. This is what the budget is to date, along with the transfers, the additional .5% cost of living, as well as the items that we just discussed, the $6,000 for collections and the transfer to the grant fund. So currently, we have 90 million in fund balance. And so we're going to use part of that to help offset this. But at the minute, day, we're going to have to review the tax rate to see if we're going to have to, what the decisions are going to be for the tax rate to go to proposal. At this point, I would like to ask if there's any questions from the court regarding what has been presented today. Oh, I do have one more item that do need to explain. Last Tuesday, we were talking about what positions have been created, bringing the total number up to 1,041. There was one position that was created under NPO during mid-year. And this was for a special project coordinator. And of course, it was a grant, so they're allowed to create a position. And so as you can see, it is highlighted. And so it brought it up to 1,042 positions that will be created for FY '25. I do want to make that note because that was left off last Tuesday. Okay? Are there any questions regarding the additional additions from last Tuesday?
Does the 90 million that you talked about in fund balance also include the projected $10 million that we'll have for this year?
No.
Okay. So, but it does include the amounts on our 25% and all of the other items that we get on? I don't see that sheet here, but.
The fund balance?
We get a sheet that gives a resolution of the fund balance?
I could pull what was up present last Tuesday.
I just wanted to know where that 90 million number you're talking about is really coming from.
Sure. For the 25%, it's 36 million, but let me pull it up so the public can see as well.
Gotcha.
Oh, it's so small. Come up here. Okay, here's the fund balance sheet that the county auditor certifies.
That's the 90 million you're talking about there?
Yes, sir.
And then that does not include the $10 million projected surplus of general fund revenues that we will have over what? When we finish the end of the year?
No. That does not include what's going to be remaining this year. It does include the 5% expenditures that will be left over, but not anything above that.
Okay. So that 100 million should maintain all of our required fund balances that we see on this sheet.
I don't have.
Plus give us a surplus of a little less than $2 million. And then that should leave $2 million in our fund balance in excess of what we have that are required items that you see on that sheet.
The county auditor has not certified what's going to be remaining out of '24 budget. And so I'm not able to predict what we're going to have remaining.
Gotcha. I understand that you can't do that, but I'm, I just needed those figures for thinking about what's the appropriate tax rate to propose. Thanks.
If there's no more questions regarding this, we would like to hand it over to the county auditor to start discussing the tax rate options. If that's okay?
Yeah. When you arrived this morning, you should have had a legal-sized piece of paper with four different colors on it. These are just tax rate options. The top, the green, excuse me. The very first one is the no new revenue adjusted for our sales tax, which is a requirement for us. This green one is the voter approval rate adjusted for sales tax. The blue one is the voter approval rate adjusted for sales tax and including the 2021 increment available. The yellow is the voter approved adjusted for sales tax and including the '21 and '22 increments available. The, it's my understanding that the pink is what the tax rate it would take to raise the revenue over the fund balance we already have. So we have 90 million in fund balance. We need 98. That's what the pink represents.
And that also does not include the projected $10 million general fund surplus?
No, sir. It includes some, the 90 million includes some, but not all.
Oh, okay. I thought the.
Well, because I estimated that we would.
I thought the 90 million was on that page that you showed us previously.
It is estimated that we will spend 95% of our expenditures. So if you look at it, some of that is part of the 10 million.
Well, that's good because we usually, I mean, for the last 10 years, we've never spent more than 90%.
For operations, correct. When you start looking at capital, it gets a little different.
Right, yeah.
The other consideration is.
We spend a whole lot less. But I'm just, I want to just talk about the regular general fund. These are the things we pay for every year. Okay? Thanks.
So I, what I'm seeing is that you've included the 90 million dollars that we estimate for fund balance that we've got in this proposed budget.
15 of which, 15 million is going to fund operations. Because we're $22 million short just on operations. She was just there.
So 50 is going to fund operations?
15.
15, okay.
Sorry, not meaning to yell.
Okay.
But.
All right.
It's highlighted on the screen in yellow regarding how we're balancing.
Okay. That's kind of what I was driving at, is that we use up the 90 million dollars in the proposed budget, and we're still seven and a half million short.
Yes, sir.
So I guess that's why we're looking at tax rates to determine how we're gonna, what we're going to do about this seven and a half million dollars that we're short.
Well, and that's why I highlighted the pink. If you'll notice.
Yes.
Column, increase in revenue over tax year 2023. It's $7,485,184 is what that tax rate would increase general fund revenues. It would also increase, no, just general fund, sorry.
So the pink line then is, is what would balance the budget without, I guess, some of these things added? Or have you already added those in, the potential increase? Okay, they have not, they're not added in here.
The only thing that was added was discussed, the .5% cost of living. That was additional, as well as the $6,000 for collections. And for the $14,000, that was transferred to the grant fund, along with what we were discussing last Tuesday. Anything additional to, that has, that needs to be brought to adoption is not included.
Okay. So with the, I mean, the pink line shows what would balance without anything added to it. But I mean, I will tell you that when I came in as Commissioner in 2003, Randy Sims came in as judge, we had very little fund balance. And so most of the capital projects that we ran into, we value engineered to try to cut costs down on everything to get within them because we didn't have the money to be able to actually, maybe in some times, it was things that we should have done, but we, we had a budget. We didn't have fund balance, and so we value engineered. That's what we had them do. Randy's, his philosophy and mine has been since, is that you really need to build up fund balance for capital projects because fund balance shouldn't be really used in the operations because that's not something that's going to necessarily be there every year. But the tax rate should fund your operations. But if you have money at the end of the year and it rolls into fund balance, that's what you use for capital projects, and that's what we did. But then, of course, in, you know, we were building fund balance in 2014, 15. And then COVID hit in 19. When we were ready to do projects, COVID hit, and, and the spending stopped. And we, capital projects just cut, closed up. We didn't do anything. We couldn't. We couldn't get contractors. They couldn't work. Everybody, once you got somebody in with COVID, everybody had to go home. I mean, it was, it was a terrible time. But all those capital projects did not get done. And now we've got those capital projects that we're trying to catch up on, plus a whole bunch more that, that we're working on. So when I look at it, if you're not planning for, planning ahead, I mean, you know, there's some that say we should just borrow the money. Every time we need something, we borrow money. I don't, I don't subscribe to that. I think it's much better to plan ahead, try to build fund balance, to be able to do those projects as you see them coming. And you can look far enough ahead that you know that there are things coming. For instance, the courthouse. We know that we've got a new court over there. To get them put into a spot that, you know, long-term they would be, it's going to take some remodel for that. I mean, we're looking at whether potentially we may have to add a county court law at some point. That's another courtroom that would have to be remodeled. All of those things, they're not done. Some of that has to, for that to occur, we've got to move some people out of the courthouse, which is what the, what we call now the 101 building, the old BISD location. That building will, will, will then allow a bunch of people to get out of the courthouse, and then we can do some remodel looking forward. I mean, we're looking at the jail right now. I mean, they're, they're running well over 800 and seem to be consistent running that. And certainly, we need to take a look at the jail maintenance and make, see where we're at and what it's going to take to, to make sure that that's up. But I, I can see, looking forward, that at some point, we're going to be having to look at expanding that jail, I believe. I mean, so all of those things, I think, are in the horizon. And if, in my opinion, if you're a conservative fiscal and you're responsible, you take a look at all that stuff and you try to bill for it. And that's what Randy was doing before me and I did after I came in, was you take a look at what all's coming, and you're watching, and you're trying to build some fund balance so you don't have to go out and borrow money every time you, you're, you see, you run up on a project and then you go borrow money. I don't like that. Just my opinion. So when I look at this, it's, it showed, the pink line shows where it would balance the budget. The, this tax rate will balance the budget without any other, anything added to it. I would tell you that, I mean, I think, I mean, there's been some, I hear some discussion about potential that might get added to the budget. And if it does, then, you know, it's certainly going to be, we're going to need a tax rate higher than what the, the pink line is. And in my opinion, you need to be trying to feel, build a little fund balance, balance because there are things on the horizon that we see, you know, that we know were going to happen. And if you're not prepared for them, you're behind. And you get prepared in the years ahead, not, not when the time comes that you are fixing to do it. And then you're trying to scramble to borrow money when you don't know what the interest rate is. I mean, borrowed money, it still costs you the same, and you got to pay interest on it, and you don't know what the interest is. And if we spend our fund balance down, it is, in my opinion, subject to S and P saying, well, you're, you're riskier because your fund balance has been dropping significantly. And then the interest rate that we sell our bonds at may be higher than what it would be if we were as stable as I, as we are right now. All that said, I think as we look forward to, not right now, of course, but in the, in the open meeting, the regular meeting, when we look at setting a proposed tax rate, those, that's what I think we need to be looking at is where we're at right now, where the proposed budget's at, and what the, the tax rate it will do, we'll need to support it. And, and when I, when I look at it, adding a penny to the, to the current tax rate, which is 40.097, and I see that's the line just above the blue line. I mean, that brings in, I mean, you might tell me quicker than I can see it, but what it will bring in, but it will, hopefully then, it would cover any additional that might, any additional things that someone may want to add at the adoption day or, and then have some fund balance at the end of the year that we can then use toward all these other projects that, that, I mean, I see are, they're on, they're on the way. We're going to have to do them.
A tax rate of .4197 total would bring in an additional $9,206,419 into the general fund.
Okay. And, and I, you know, I've heard the comments about the, what the fund balance will be, the 10 million, whether it is or not, I don't know. I, I think what y'all are doing now, you're budgeting at a tighter, you're closer to what actual may be once. I know we've, I know you're pushing people to spend the money out of their account before we actually use contingency to do it. So when that happens, that means that there's going to be less fund balance at the end of the year because they're using up their budget that was, that they were budgeted at the, at the first year. So all of those things said, I mean, and we may not have the $10 million at the end of the year. I don't know. We may have. I don't have any idea, really. But we have to base what we're going to do on, on a current budget. And our, and, and that's what I think y'all, you presented a proposed budget that's very conservative. I want to compliment both of you. You did a great job trying to hold the budget down as much as you could. But frankly, we're an urban county, and we're growing, and we, we've got a lot of needs. And if we, if we stick our head in the sand and say, well, we'll just borrow money next time we need it, rather than trying to build fund balance, I think that's a bad policy.
Judge, I, I hear everything you said. I'm very pleased to hear you say that we're an urban county. Because that's something that for the last eight years, I have tried to get our perspective changed. Here's what I see is of the $168 million under the proposed, under the total revenues for general fund, and of the $190 million that is without capital that we sell, I'll just say if we typically, okay, and I put those figures together for you last year and for the year before, even during the pre-COVID years, we did not spend on average 12% of what we budgeted to spend. But let's mark that, let's be more conservative than that. Let's say it's 10%, okay? Well, 10% of $190 million of what our expenditures are in the general fund, that's $19 million. We're probably not going to spend $19 million of what's in this budget, and that's a 10-year trend. Actually, it's a conservative adjustment to the 10-year trend. But let's just say 5 million or 5%. Let's say we actually spend 95%, which we haven't done in 10 years, of what we have budgeted to spend in this budget. This is without capital projects. That's nine and a half million dollars?
But I don't know how you leave out capital because that is a huge.
Well, I understand. Capital's all come, capital's all coming out of surplus. I'll get to that.
Well, no.
I'll get to that. Capital, capital is coming out of fund balance and those types of things. But what I'm saying is, is because we're talking about using 90 million dollars, right?
But where do you get fund balance?
The 90 million.
Money that you don't spend in the budget. That's where you get fund balance.
We're collecting everything other than the 22 million, if you look at page on the proposed budget, without capital. Okay? The reality of it is, is at 10% of not being spent, of 90% expenditures, there's 19 in that 22 million dollars. Are you with me? Are you with me?
No.
Okay.
I'm just telling you that at the end of the day.
I know that you have a point, and you're trying to justify your point, but I would like for you to listen to what I am saying.
Any fund balance.
That's not true.
But, well, yes, it is. If you, if you spend everything that you budget, then you're not going to have any fund balance at the end of the year, any extra, unless you, if you had any at the beginning and you don't spend it, then you've got it.
Okay.
I mean, that's simple economics.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not a clear representation of how we have done things and what the result is because I, for one, am very tired, and I've expressed it before, of taking money out of people's pockets that we don't need and we don't spend.
So you're saying that the capital projects that we've got online, we don't need?
You're putting words into my mouth.
Well, you're telling.
You're putting words into my mouth. No, I'm telling you that we can afford this budget at the no new revenue rate.
And you just want to act like it's not there. Okay?
Judge.
Do we need?
You're, you're, you're kind of, okay. I'm not going to do any more bamboozling with you.
Do you, do you have any? Do you, do you have any...
You do this every year.
No, sir.
Nothing else?
No, sir.
You do this every year.
Okay. So it is 9:56?
And I'm tired of taking money out of people's pockets that we don't need and we don't spend.
Do what you need to do. It's 9:56. We're going to have a break. We'll adjourn this meeting and then have a break till the next meeting. And it's probably going to take 10 minutes to get everything set up.